Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Better, better.
We'll call this meeting to order. Would you please call the board?
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Mr. Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Ford.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Chairman Warren.
Here. Well, we start this meeting with a prayer. Do you want to lead us in person?
Yes, sir. Our brother, we thank you for the opportunity to again represent the people of Lakeview County and to meet and discuss issues that are important to people there. We ask for your wisdom and your guidance as we make those decisions. We ask for your blessings upon the people that we meet, all of the needs that they may face. We ask special blessings upon the staff of our county that serve those people and their families. We think of the many, many things in our country and this world that need your presence. We hope that you can give us your time and your effort to make this country and make this world a better place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the board, let's see today's agenda, any additions? Any discretion on the agenda? Did I need a motion?
Make a motion, please.
Support.
We have a motion in support, all in favor of the motion, signify an aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carries. January 30th, 2020, regular board meeting.
I'll move.
Discussion on those minutes? All in favor, signify an aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carries. Do you have a question? Review of Commissioner Miley's spent sheets going around at DIAS this morning. See anything that doesn't look very... Let me bring it before the board this morning. Bring this down to the elected official department head updates. Any elected official department head elected to give us a... Jeff, how did this one?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. As I was requesting last week on the 9-1-1 outage, I mentioned that there was a briefing the next day, so I was up in San Antonio County to get that briefing. I will read you the press statement that PFN made on that, and then I'll explain it because they did a very good job of taking the techie notes out of it. What they said was on January 31st, Minnesota Fiber Network extreme thing event that caused a rippling interruption throughout the Michigan Next Generation 911 network, impacting multiple dispatch centers and disrupting 911 services. The PFN optical transport nodes restored from a power event in a corrupted manner causing Ethernet ring protection to fail and creating loops in the network. These loops were what consumed all bandwidth and interrupted services until engineers repaired the cars and manually switched the traffic. The FAN engineers performed a software restart which brought the corrupted module back to a normal state. PFN recognizes the importance of 911 call delivery and is taking necessary corrective action to ensure similar incidents occur in future. Now, I'll translate. What happened was, is they had a co-location site, which is very common in the industry of not just 911, but technology where multiple vendors occupy the same little hut building with electronics. A third-party company was in there doing routine maintenance work on some power, and when they took some power stuff off, it inadvertently affected the PFN equipment, which they were not there to do anything with. And what happened was, the power started cycling on and off, on and off, on and off. And what happened was, the circuit board cards for PFN stuff got powered, overpowered power, and corrupted the forward on the cards, causing what's called a broadcast function. Flooded the physical fiber optic connection that routes the core of their entire 911 business throughout the entire state. It's complex. That's what really happened. So what they're doing is, they are going to be investing up to a million dollars of their own money that they're gonna use, and they're gonna have one opportunity to fix that problem and further isolate their equipment, including the power, throughout all their knowns in the entire state. So they're gonna be working on that this year. There were 84 PSAPs within the state that were affected, and 3.3 million. So each location was impacted differently than another one. We were impacted very minimally because we're still in the process of completely over from the old to the new stuff, so we still had the majority of our customers on the AT&amp;T network and not the network. So we were not as impacted as some other countries. But that's what happened. If they raise any questions on that, I can answer them. And lastly, you had a question last week about surcharge and about reducing the rate or whatever like that. Within the Michigan statutes, this board has the authority to reduce the amount collected based on the voter approval. So if the board approves X amount of dollars, or I'm sorry, the voters approve X amount of dollars, this board can say, okay, well, we're only gonna collect less than that. You cannot collect more than what the voter said, which is 400, reduce. You can answer your question. I didn't look at the section.
So at any point, depending on your needs, we could reduce it. Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate the fact.
Any other question concerning that? My concern, as soon as I heard it was out that morning, was how it would affect across the state. So you're telling me they're fixing it, I understand, but we had power outage here in Valley 1 or 2, all across the northern part of the state. And we still don't think we can change that thing. So somebody hit some spot, my concern, somebody moved that station, can they affect us again like that? Or they can be backups of the service out here, that when that goes down, it won't affect the rest of the state.
It was a very unique circumstance that happened and the technology that was in there that caused this broadcast room to happen. It caused a perfect storm. It shouldn't have happened, obviously it did, and that's what we're going to take it up to that particular... They're changing the technology that created that storm, so that way it can't happen again. They're gonna change it to something different, which is more effective, and therefore they're isolating those power channels. So it was one of those just abnormal things that nobody would ever have expected, so...
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
Any other elected official or department head like to give us an update this morning? If you can see no one, I'll close elected official department head updates. Thank you. Bring this down to the first public time. You've all been in our meetings before when it comes to the first public time, so remember that public time, we're gonna give you three, now I'll give you four minutes this morning to speak, and board doesn't respond during public time. Questions back?
I'll step up and break this. Maurice Freed, Lakeview Township, also Lakeview County, P Party. I'm going to address 2A. I missed your administrative work session last week, but I've been appearing regularly on these Thursdays to address that. And I've had discussions independently with various commissioners, and my concern is one thing. And I'll preface that statement by saying, each of you have taken a vote. We all know what each commissioner stands for. You've got conservative values, whatever political party, I don't really care, but I know what you believe in. You've taken a vote of office to adhere to the Constitution of the country and to the state of Michigan. So we all know where you stand. But the only thing I'm going to address, and it was something that was profoundly brought to my attention by one of your commissioners, is that it's the message you're sending now by meeting three times on this particular resolution. Because, you know, the citizens, I believe, know each one of you adhered to the Second Amendment. Just clear as bow. I think what you have to concern yourself with, and it's the message you want to send to Lansing. That's really the emphasis. And Commissioner Kemp brought that to my attention. He attended our work session at P Party, and it hit me that that is really what we need to be doing here on this resolution. The resolution is just reaffirming what we already know, right? But we want to make it clear to the government where what their county stands with regard to whatever she wants to initiate, and people are concerned with the redlining and curailing rights and so forth, and we don't want to run into a Virginia thing. And I will tell you that our House of Representatives is hanging in the balance by four votes, and it is precarious. So I listened to Commissioner Warren on that issue, and he's alarmed by it. I am too. So that's all I want to address on that. And language is language, but the message is what you want to really evasive in the state of Michigan. All right, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for letting me speak, and I do address you with the utmost respect. And I'm going to start out with Mr. Warren, you stated that you wanted the word "legal" removed from a resolution, so that you can stand up for the rights of all your constituents. Is that correct? I do have to wonder what the word "legal" or why it intimidates to keep this all. It's not really a good sign. Are you aware of trashing the image not only of your constituents, but all the good citizens of this entire county by removing the word "legal"? With your opinion, with this flow of your constituents, you have no business being counted commissioners. The period does not always have the best image, and you're doing a brave new service to our country, the good citizens, leaders, and our law enforcement officers by promoting a negative image. Shame on all of you who voted for the first presentation. Why don't you focus on the good citizens and outnumber the unlawful ones that you want to protect? Taking a positive attitude regarding this county would be greatly appreciated. I do hope eliminating the word "legal" has nothing to do with illegal immigrants. Thank you.
There is none to respond for. Could you state your name and where you're from?
Oh, I didn't. Joy and Foods, Mayfield Township.
Eric? I also would like to speak. I'm trying not to trash you. I'm Harry Ayers from Attica Township. I want to thank the Commissioners Roy Warren and Jarvis for being with us from the beginning without making changes to the wording of our resolution. I'd like to make it clear that I believe that every one of the commissioners are also good people and people that have good intentions. But just like the people who spoke here a couple of weeks ago that are against this resolution being passed, good people with good intentions to make us... They said, "I own a gun, and I believe in the Second Amendment," to make us believe that they were on our side. But then they went on to say, "We should have more gun control laws." What they say sounded good, but their actions proved that they don't really believe in our gun rights or our liberties. And some of you said, "I am with you," but then added wording to the resolution that makes it useless for its purpose. I don't believe that was your intention, but your actions prove that you are only in support of our resolution if it is limited by man-made laws, even future laws that our governor has told us he is trying to have enacted right now. And anyone with any common sense knows that those laws are not constitutional. We are law-abiding citizens and gun owners. It is the unconstitutional laws that the governor and her guilty want to pass that will make us unlawful. Punish them, not us. I learned from the Bible, you know a man by the fruits of his labors. In other words, no matter how well he gives speeches or how good his intentions are, look at what his actions are. What is the fruit that is born from his actions? What does his actions cause to happen? Last week, a couple of you complained that bringing the resolution up again without the damaging wording had never been done before, and that it will change your willingness to even allow resolutions like this to be considered in the future, when you should be grateful for the opportunity to make this. Please prove how much you really believe in the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence. Please pass the original resolution we presented to the board. The resolution that the Ad-Hoc Committee recommended be passed as originally written. Thank you.
William Hamilton from Lakeview Township. I'll keep this brief since it's quite a hold. Some people brought term "sanctuary" that was in the original resolution. They didn't like that term. That term has been hijacked by the left in support of illegal immigrants and non-enforcement of our immigration laws. In this case, for the Second Amendment, the term "sanctuary" is reaffirming a constitutional and God-given right. There is no constitutional or God-given right to for people from other countries to illegally enter our country and break our laws. This resolution is no longer, is not in any way supporting unlawful acts. It's just a reaffirmation of our rights. Very simple, rights that are listed in Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. Please don't let their actions twist and change the definition of good words. If you really want to know what sanctuary really means, look it up. It's very appropriate for this situation. Another thing, coming up, there's elections. Citizens have made it clear that they want this resolution passed. Many people have spoken in the last few weeks in support of it. And frankly, this resolution needs to pass as it was originally written, and that would really tell the county that you, as elected officials, support our rights truly. A lot of elected officials get in office, they take their oath of office, and they do things against our rights. You have a chance here to send a message that you won't do that. With that being said, anybody that cannot stand up for our Second Amendment rights needs to be replaced and will be looked at come future elections.
Thank you.
Who else would like to address this board during the first public time?
My name is Jim Hutt. I live in Alba Township. On the 30th, we passed a resolution that was changed from the original wording presented to the board. In this regard, from its own head-on committee's regulation, the wording that was added to the resolution made it worthless. We cracked the mistake before it was passed to the resolution as originally. I ask you to pass this clean, simple, fair resolution without any changes to it, like a lot of other Michigan counties have. Something else, the whole country is going through this entire process here at the back of our state. And we have the sheriff's department, we have prosecutors, and if they thought it was going to be an issue, the sheriff wouldn't deny the resolution. So I'm asking the board to pass it completely simple.
Who else would like to speak this morning today?
Yes, sir. Hi, folks. My name is Bill Betts. I'm from Attica Township. Been living here in Lakeview County now for 87, almost 20 years. Could not picture myself living anywhere else where these kids that want to go to school would live noplace else. I appreciate all the work that you guys do. I just would note that, you know, this is a great place to be. This is a great county. This is a great state. This is a great nation. We've had a set of rules in place for 240 odd years. We've had, in this room, we've got people with all kinds of different views. The thing that makes us special is that we can all have these views. Nobody's telling us what to do, nobody's saying we can't. Everybody is permitted to have their viewpoint. We have that because we have a set of laws that we've held onto and have been our basis since the founding of our country. I would urge you folks to, while I was happy that you guys did bring out a resolution, I long thought and consideration, and I understand where everybody was coming from, but sometimes states invariably, think back 30, 40 years ago, the kind of, the laws that we had on the books for everything were a lot different. And as we go, there are other states that are in a process of making some radical changes to our, you know, to our Second Amendment laws. And so I would urge you, knowing that this resolution does not mean any change for anybody, does not mean anybody's going to have to live any differently, but it just reaffirms your point, your stalwartness and support of these amendments. So I would urge you to pass this. I think it would be a good thing. Again, that's my view of it, but I do appreciate, especially with other conditions, you folks, plus as well, everybody who made it up out here this morning. It is worth it, and the fact, again, that we can all get together and discuss this is just a testament to who we are as a people, who we are as a nation.
Thank you.
Who else would like to address this board this morning?
Thank you for the opportunity, Derek Koltis, Attica Township. I am, with these little word changes and everything, I am the victim of that policy already. I was doing my job. I had a two-on-one situation, and I was getting robbed. Because of policy and the law, I was not able to carry my gun with me that day. So I ended up being shot. I had to crawl into the gas station from where I was shot, call my wife, tell her that as I'm bleeding out, I'm okay, I will make it. I had to call 911 because the gas station attendant was so hysterical, he couldn't do it. I hoped God, none of you ever had to go through what I did. I've been through years of therapy. I cannot hold down a regular job today because I have nerve damage in my right leg. With these words being said, tweet this, tweet that, you're putting my life in danger again. I'm not gonna stand for it. My whole outlook of that has changed from that day. That was 13 years ago. You guys want to play word games? That's not, this is not the time to do it. We need to stand for the Second Amendment. Because, again, if somebody else gets hurt because of little words, they weren't allowed to do it, that's gonna be on you guys. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address this board this morning?
Good morning. I'm Carol Brown from Lakeview Township, and I just want to commend you for allowing us to go back there to the wording. I'd like to be a client of all the other states that are, counties that are doing this. And we also show, send a message to Lansing, the state and the country, who are all on the same page in this resolution. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address this board this morning?
I'm Myra Berry from Lakeview Township, and I just want to say that I agree with, I'd like to see it passed with the original wording, because I do believe the new wording changes the meaning and kind of nullifies the original meaning of the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address this board this morning?
Good morning, Commissioners. Hi, this is Timothy Ward from Goodland Township. Two weeks ago when I was here, there was a lot of discussion about the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution, and specifically the added paragraph including the word "lawful." I know some of you are opposed to removing that law because you feel it will lead to a lawless situation, and many of us had asked you to not include that. I know today you're revisiting the original resolution as written. The original resolution as written without that word does not lead to lawlessness. It only encourages you to support the supreme law of the land, which is the Constitution and the Second Amendment. So it doesn't, it doesn't take away from lawlessness, it just acknowledges that you support the Constitution as is without adding additional already illegal laws. And with that, I encourage you to all, please vote for the original wording in the resolution. Thank you.
Who else would like to address the board this morning?
Good morning, Commissioners. Anna Lurma, Marathon Township, Otter Lake. Me, like these fine folks, are here because I'm passionate about serving. With me, it's the elders, our senior citizens. I'm very passionate about that. I currently work with the senior program. I'm sure everyone's aware of this. And what I'd like to say at this point in time is that we don't, we do not, we, as in the program, are not doing enough to really provide services or care or satisfy the needs of our senior citizens. Not even satisfy them, just begin to address them. What I would like to say at this point in time, since I only have four minutes or rest, is that I would like to see small changes take place, begin to take place. And that can start simply with us as the workers that go out there to do the assessments to open the services. There are two of us, myself and the registered nurse, that go out there. We only have 16 hours a week to work with these citizens. We have a waiting list of 15 clients that need our services that we cannot get to. One suggestion would be, give us an additional eight hours a week. I've requested that of my superiors. There's no money. Okay? Another thing would be, to give us appropriate working tools to work with. As you are very well aware, I was here last week or the week before with what I have to work with. We had a situation where we needed to go into a home that was considered by VAAA hazardous environment. That meant that there were drugs in full display of our client that we should have seen. We couldn't go because we don't have the proper equipment. We don't have a mouth, we don't have the booties, we don't have masks, we have nothing. We don't even have gloves. The client died. Now, I don't think, I think that we should start again, like I said, by increasing our time. One day is out for us out in the field, opening new cases. We don't get to see our ones that we currently have opened. We have seniors that require a lot of attention. Some cannot read or write. They have no family. They have no one but us to go out there and help them. And we can't do that. Therefore, not only increasing our time would be helpful, logical, but also providing us with proper needed tools, equipment, to get out there to these hazardous situations. They are no different, our elders are no different than our young families. And believe me, I've worked in this situation in Genesee County as a child protective services worker. So I've been exposed to all this. It's not new for me. So I would like to see some changes, slow but sure. And I will be here every Thursday. Every Thursday, I will be here. You can bet on that. Advocating for the same passion that I have, that these fine folks have. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to us during the first public time? Would anybody else like to speak to us during the first public time? During the second amendment, we'll close the first public time. Bring this down to, I guess we're, notice appointments needed. We have some, something here from the health department, needing help, asking to reappoint. I think we have a little time on that, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, so far, one letter of request to continue the nomination. I don't know if we know what the other people are interested in in terms of.
No, I have retired. I've retired, so I have no.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree, we do have time left on those, on those medical appointments. And we do only have one applicant this time, so I would suggest that we move that to probably three weeks, believe me, that you can commit to hold.
Yep, we also, what's the date for that?
March fifth.
All right. Is that when you want to vote, to March the fifth?
In a whole sense.
We also have a challenge, you know, we have those categories, so we need to get some guidance, I think, either through our board members or from the director of CME, Jemel, who's in what category and what we can do there.
Well, we'll do that in the same meeting. It's here today, so we'll find out if it can be made today.
March fifth, I'll put it on my schedule, and we'll distribute the information. I didn't realize those appointments were on the agenda this morning.
Bring this down to the notice resolution.
He was here and all of a sudden something came up and he left.
And unfortunately, what that does, for everybody in the audience, what that does, it puts us back in a tight position. And I don't know, I'm going to have to find out why he had to leave.
Make the motion move forward, let the audience hear the people's views, because that's what they're here for. And I would have to, that's what we have to do.
All in favor, signify.
This discussion is scheduled.
Well, we can have a discussion, go ahead, bring it up. We've had a discussion for weeks.
Well, in an alternative, we have had a discussion, and there's been a lot of discussion since we've had that discussion.
I'm sure what they would like to know is why those words were inserted in the first place.
Absolutely, I have no issue with it. But, the, the question, I think, at least for me, and I only, I only speak for myself, first off, a couple things. I don't think that any, that this resolution, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, I have no issues with saying, I don't think this resolution is well-written from the beginning. And I don't think that, especially after waiting these, these two weeks, and listening to my constituents, I think there is a lot of confusion out there in the public as to what, and I see some head shaking, I'm not saying you, I'm saying my constituent or I'm saying my constituents have a lot of confusion about this issue. And the, and the reason is, I think, it hinges on, this resolution really implies a action, that there's, that there, that by passing this resolution, there is going to be an action. There, that you're declaring a Second Amendment Sanctuary county. Then, when the resolution goes through and you read the fore of the resolution, the action, the only action that it actually sets forth is that we incur it, or I shouldn't, I don't want to get it wrong, I've got it here, the only action that it actually sets forth is that, I just flipped around the page, is that the board affirms its support and peer, for the Lapeer County Sheriff and Lapeer County Prosecuting Attorney in the, in the exercise of their sound discretion to not enforce against any citizen of unconstitutional player in law. So that's the action that it actually puts forth. The, the interesting thing about this resolution is that, is that when you say we're going to declare the county a Second Amendment Sanctuary county, I think the vast majority of people out there are under the belief that there is a much larger action that that's going to put into motion. And, and I, I get, I don't think there's one person up here that's not a supporter of the Second Amendment. But I think that's really kind of where the confusion lies, and in, in reading all the, all the posts that are online and, and, you know, and I, and I read all of them, and speaking with, with members of our community, I think that's really where the confusion is. I was at Tim Horton's at seven o'clock this morning, and a gentleman who was an ex-law enforcement officer for the, for the county of Lapeer, and a, and a very, and retired, and a very large Second Amendment supporter, said to me, what does this thing mean? And I said, well, what do you think it means? Just I'm curious as to, you know, you read the articles, what do you think it means? And he said, well, I sure hope it doesn't mean that immigrant, that illegal immigrants can bring guns into our country and our county. That was what he took from the resolution. I explained that that was not anywhere near the case. But I think there's, there's a lot of confusion. And I guess in saying that, I would, I guess, like to ask, since Commissioner Warner, or Warren, I'm sorry, since Commissioner Warren has, has, the one that introduced this and has made this motion, one of the questions that has come up, and I would, I would ask you this, in your, and I guess it's only in your opinion, do you believe that, that this resolution as written, in any way, shape, or form, affects the current laws pertaining to firearms that are, that are in the state, that are currently being enforced by our, our Sheriff's Department and our Prosecutor's Office?
My past, I don't get the whole picture.
No, you didn't, I know, it's conversation, conversation's always a problem.
That's not what this purpose was for. And you're speaking, speaking daily yesterday, Virginia moving forward on gun rights, red flag laws. They had fifty-one to forty-eight vote, Republicans spoke up against it, Democrats spoke up against it, because Democrats are also gun rights owners. Some of them don't all agree with it, but it's not a matter of is it Republican or Democrat issue? It's not a political issue? This is your constitutional right. Is it going to change the law? No. They're just telling you, whoever gets into this office, and if the three parties, branch of government are going to end up being the same, that they're going to take over this at the state of Michigan? Yes, they could be challenged in this Supreme Court. In the meantime, that gentleman just got, he got shot following those laws. It's a man-made law, but we have to, what we're saying is, we want to let them know, you cannot come in here and drag change our Constitution in this state of Michigan. But we're going to tell Virginia, we're out there watching you too.
What I'm asking is, and I understand, I understand your passion, what I'm asking, because I want to make sure what I'm, I'm voting on, I want to be very clear about it. And I think, I think all the citizens have the right to have it be very clear. So my question again is, the current laws that are on the books, I guess the easier question is, do you think there are any laws that are currently on the books that are unconstitutional and would be affected by this resolution?
This resolution isn't a law.
I, I understand that.
It's a statement, the leaders in this community are saying, do not try to overtake our constitutional rights.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, and I think it's a simple, I think it's a simple question, do you feel that there are any that are unconstitutional? You put this resolution out here, I think that the, that the amendment that was made clarified that we were, we were, that it was lawful, so.
It's lawful, I want to get rid of the word.
So, and you want to get rid of that word? So my question to you is, do you feel there are any laws currently on the books that are unconstitutional regarding firearms?
Doesn't matter to me.
I'm sorry, this is not public time.
But it's, you're asking that question, and I'm trying to tell you this way simply, across this whole country, the problem we're having is, it's everything about words. This, these folks here are simple, they're like me. And what we want to know is, do you go protect that right or you're, I don't care how it's worked.
The problem we have, Mr. Warren, is that words matter, they do matter. All I'm asking simply is, do you think there are any laws?
You're asking about law, I'm not asking about that. Now, when the company kind of changing, we're letting them know, don't plan on.
If, if you say to me.
Would you guys please address the chair?
If you say to me, you know, if you say to me, I'm proposing this because I believe that, that all laws that are currently on the books are unconstitutional, I, I can't support that. So if you're saying to me, no, I don't believe that the laws that are, that are currently out there are unconstitutional, and we're not asking our sheriff to go out there and, and enforce, and not enforce laws that are currently on books, because I don't even think that legally, that statutorily, we can, that is within our duties, so I guess, you know, I just, I don't understand why that would be a hard question to ask, to answer.
My time comes during royal sessions right now, it's at all.
So you won't address the question?
I will, I will, but I'm not going to keep going back and forth. I'm going to wait till my turn to speak, so I'll go ahead and.
So you, okay, so.
I can't, I could go to one.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get to a point, with all due respect, that, that we, that I, that I can, without the additional wording, support your resolution. That's what I'm trying to get to. And, and so, and that's why I ask you the, that's why I ask you the question. I'm not sure what you're, this does not state, well, okay, let me ask, let me ask you another question, if I could, and I'll ask, I'll direct it to the sheriff, if I could. Sheriff, I guess the question is, if this resolution as written is passed, is it going to change the way that you, that you enforce the current laws that are on the books in regards to, to guns?
So, yes, let me, and let me answer it. And I'll be honest with you, I just sit back here, and I'm frustrated with this whole thing. I am, I truly, truly am. We go back three weeks before our first, before this meeting ever took place or this topic came up, I sent emails preparing people for this. A week prior to that first meeting, I sent the resolution as written that we're asking for here, to all of you, and so that you could see that part of it. This has gotten, and I understand, and it's passionate, just like everybody in here in the, in your views and stuff, and the truth of the matter is, and I agree with, with some of the things you've said, there is nobody in this room that's against the Second Amendment. To be honest with you, because I'm thrown into the middle of this, and I have no problem with that, I think a lot of it is confusion on both sides, or reading into it. And what do I mean by that? So the word lawful is what we keep talking about. If you talk, and I've talked to so many of these people in the room, this is what I've done for the last four weeks, because we have had no end to this. The last four weeks, people talk lawful, when we, when they say lawful, and when we say lawful, as Second Amendment, as Second Amendment backers, basically what they're saying is, we see what's happening in Lansing, we see what's happening in Virginia. The problem is, and somebody sat in here, and I mean no disrespect to the other side or who feel differently than we do, because ultimately, I'm the sheriff for both sides. If you call for help, I'm going to help you. That's it. But I also will give my opinions when asked. The lawful side is what they're saying, they're saying, we had a lady that came in before instance, there's nothing on the books, there's nothing that they're trying to, to restrict our guns or infringe on our rights, that's not true. There's multiple, there's multiple legislation topics in Lansing right now that they're talking about. So we talk about red flag laws, I've spoken out, I'm, I, that's a whole nother story of it, but I'm against it. It puts us into a complete trick bag, I'm not okay with that. So what they're saying is, anything that's going to come down from hereforth, because what we're seeing, what's happening around the country, we're seeing what people in Lansing are doing is, they are saying with this, this is symbolic. If you want to be truthful, this, that's all this is, is symbolic, and saying that Lapeer County is against infringement on our constitutional rights. The lawful side for this part is that we're not going to, we're going to stand up, because as these things trickle down from Lansing and expect us to enforce them, we're not okay with that. Lapeer County stands together on the Second Amendment side. Where I think it gets confusing on the other side when people talk to me is, their words not necessarily lawful, there's just law-abiding. And what I mean by that is, you have, there's people that are saying, well, ultimately, felons is really what it comes down to, the felons and possession of weapons. That's not what this argument is about. This argument is about what the government, Lansing, Virginia, all across the country, is trying to push down on us to infringe on those rights and the things that we're having. This conversation is important, but everybody in this room, when we lay our head on our pillow at night, we know this is symbolic. This is something as into major changes and things that happen with it, to answer your question, as into, does it change any of the existing laws that we're enforcing? No. It does not. But it sends a damn good message to Lansing when they're starting to look at all these other things, out of Virginia and out of Lansing, that they're trying to bring down to us that it says, hey, we're not okay with this, we're standing together, and Lapeer County is a strong Second Amendment county.
Hold on, Mr. Warren, I can flip there. And, and thank you for that, Sheriff, and I appreciate that. And I, quite frankly, agree with you. And really, what my intention here today is, is to clear that up that you just so eloquently stated, because of the, you know, this resolution doesn't say any unconstitutional laws henceforth. That's, that's, there's, there's a few things like that that could have really cleared this thing up and, and made it much clearer to the constituents that are out there. You know, I, I, and I do think, you know, I, Jeff, is it Moose, I think is your name? Moose? Boe, Moose? Moose? Okay, thank you. Jeff Moose, who evidently is the founder of, of the Michigan for two-way sanctuary counties, or at least credited with that, in this article from MLife, and I'll, and I'll, in his quote, he said, he said, "The movement is about spending, about sending a message to state officials, though it won't change day-to-day county operations." Which is exactly what you just said. And, and I think that's, I think that's a very important, that's, that's a very important key topic in this, that I think that the resolution actually kind of misses, that is my point and what I want, the point I want to make. So, and to be honest, I don't remember a topic that had, and I understand the people in here are very well informed, but had this much confusion about what it was going to do, what the action was going to be. So.
So, I think we can all start off with at least the foundation of agreeing on a few things. That we're all Second Amendment supporters, that the resolution is primarily symbolic, that words matter, however, and also, we've heard about our oath. That's one of the reasons why you see as much debate here among Second Amendment supporters, because nobody in the audience needs to convince us of the importance of our oaths. Those words matter too. In my particular case, 45 years now I've been doing public service. I can't tell you, well, I can tell you, but how many times I've taken oaths over those 45 years. And they've always mattered to me. And that's one of the things that we're struggling with, is that term of constitutionality, which I'll get to in a second. But one of the reasons that we wanted to know was why the wording was defined or changed or the addition on lawful, was because a lot of us made it clear early on that although we were Second Amendment supporters, we were not sanctuary supporters. Because you will not see that element in the Constitution. The Constitution deals with separations of powers, three equal branches of government. And we're a nation of laws, and we also have checks and balances to make sure that those laws stay in tune with our Constitution. And nowhere in the framework of that Constitution does it give that authority or that power to individuals or individual local governments to start deciding what they're going to declare as constitutional and what they're not. And a sanctuary city does. And out of all due respect to Mr. Hamilton, who gave his definition of what sanctuary is, that's his definition. There are a lot of other definitions out there, and you look at the left and how they've hijacked that with immigration. Sorry, but sanctuary city without a definition can also infer, we're not going to support laws. And that infers lawlessness, and nowhere in there is that authorized by the Constitution. And again, we're back to taking our oath to support the Constitution. So, that's why you see this great debate going on. Because you keep mentioning Second Amendment rights, you've got a whole diocese of Second Amendment supporters here. That's just a small portion of the Constitution. Looking at the bigger aspect of the Constitution, which is the separation of powers and the checks and balances in place to make sure that we remain a lawful society. And we have some concerns about sanctuary. Now, many of you may have seen that our great State Senator Kevin Daley sent a letter out yesterday, February 12th. I'll read this, because I know Kevin stands by these words. And I'll tell you right now, I would sign this letter in a heartbeat. I stand by these words too. And I tell you that at the same time that I tell you I will not vote in support of the resolution that's before us right now, that uses sanctuary. And that went back to day one. Take sanctuary out of there, and I'll sign that resolution in a heartbeat. Or define it, which we tried to do, and clearly that was a problem, but to just assume a definition of sanctuary, so Kevin's letter, which doesn't address sanctuary at all, Kevin's letter says, "To our board here, to honorable Chairman Gary Roy and the Lapeer County Board of Commissioners, our Second Amendment right is a basic fundamental right. It is a right established in our Constitution and a right that is not to be infringed upon. As the second of the first ten amendments to the Constitution, it was formally ratified on December 15, 1791. This Bill of Rights lists specific limitations to governmental power as a response to calls from several states for greater constitutional protection for individual liberties. When I ran for office, I promised you that I would do my very best to uphold the Constitution, to defend our community values, and to protect our liberties. When those values and rights are threatened, it is up to the people to reassert them. It's important for Americans everywhere to assert this right, not only for us today, but for our children, for our grandchildren, and for future generations down the road. Today, I stand with the folks of my district, and I stand on the side of their constitutional rights." Does anybody on this diocese disagree, or would you sign something like that? Because I know I would put my name to that tomorrow. That also defines how I feel. So, our debate is not about that. Our debate is about, to use Commissioner Kemp's words, a poorly-written resolution that goes from stating the vote that's before us right now, whereas it is the desire of the board to declare in support of the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and the provisions of the Michigan Constitution, which protect Lapeer County citizens' individual rights to bear arms. Amen, absolutely. Whereas each Lapeer County Commissioner, as provided by Article 9, Section 1 of the Michigan Constitution, 1963, took an oath to support the United States Constitution and the Michigan Constitution. Amen. Then it immediately goes to, whereas, Second Amendment, sanctuary county, oh, this is the original one that we defined, so you took that out. So, now instead of having a definition, it just goes to, now therefore, it's hereby resolved, Lapeer County Board of Commissioners, Lapeer County, Michigan, be and is hereby declared Second Amendment Sanctuary County. That's where we have a problem. That's where we have our difference. So, when we take our vote, whatever our vote is, and anybody that wants to run against us, like I said, these words are important enough to us that, supporting the Constitution is more important to me than politics. This is not about politics. This is about symbolism and words, and words matter, and the oath that we took to defend the Constitution, not just to defend a particular amendment to the Constitution, to defend the Constitution. I could show you in the Constitution where it talks about those three branches of government, where we have lawfulness in our society because of checks and balances. You show me where in the Constitution it gives individuals or individual local governments the ability to start making those decisions. And then, maybe I'll be able to support this. I've said that all along, none of you have been able to show that to me. Because sanctuary is not addressed in our Constitution. And so, right now, if I take an oath to defend the Constitution of the country, defend the Constitution of this state, that's exactly what I'm going to do. When you bring a resolution before me that starts talking about sanctuary, and individuals and individual communities being able to decide what is constitutional and what is not, that's where you don't have my vote. That's why I won't vote.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Snyder is a much better speaker than I am, but he's representing, I think, for the most part, my feelings on this. We are a country under the Constitution. As part of that, there is an ongoing debate about laws in our country. That's the process. I think it's important that people who feel strongly about their opinions get engaged in that process. And this is, I understand, certainly a part of that process. But it is under the Constitution, and laws are permitted, changes in laws. We do have gun laws. In different states, there are different laws. And they're only reconciled when they go to the U.S. Constitution and the final, or U.S. Supreme Court, and there's a final decision. That's our Constitution, that's our process. If we get to a point where we decide that individuals or units of government can decide whatever they want and ignore what our government, including the Supreme Court, says, we no longer have a Constitution or a democratic country. We're headed to dictatorship, from my view. So, if we're going to protect the Constitution with our oath, we have to, at times, not fall into the trap of not being clear on what we say and what we do. Like Commissioner Snyder said, and all the other commissioners, we all support the Second Amendment. We all, I think, want to fight against laws in our state and in our country that are not in the best interest of the citizens of this country, and that are a real challenge to how we view the Second Amendment. But we have to, we have to respect the process, that if it goes to the Supreme Court and it gets decided in a different way, our next step is to change the political dynamics, get involved in local and state and national politics, change the court or whatever. That's all part of that process, from my view. But we, because of our oath, can't, at this point, support something where sanctuary sounds like to an awful lot of people, including in our county, because I've heard from some of them too, that we're going to say that we're not following that constitutional process, that individuals or units of government can decide something else. So, as much as I support 99% of this resolution, that word hangs me up, and I won't be able to support that word.
Well, everybody knows I'm not a speaker. I just usually speak from the heart. I look at this as being symbolic, and we're trying to get Lapeer County to be united and to get the message to Lansing that we are in support of our Second Amendment. The sanctuary word, illegal immigrants, never even entered my mind when I looked at it. I think we need to send the resolution as written, without the added language, and make our point. We all know that this isn't anything legal binding. It isn't going to do anything other than send a message. But I think we need to send a strong message, because we don't want to be Virginia or any other state. We want to make sure that we have the rights to bear arms. And I don't think anybody's, I didn't read in here where it said that we were trying to change laws or give authority to do that. It's supporting our Second Amendment, sanctuary in there or not. I think it should go as presented as originally. And I'm in support of it.
And I understand where you're coming from, like in my Constitution, I can understand. I went into the Air Force, my license was sworn in, and I took that off. I understand. We came in here with a thing that's coming, because I'm not a big speaker either, but I'm a simple person. This audience is simple. We're not looking at all the fancy words and how it should say it. I understand words have meanings. But we also know that we, as a people, stand up to those, and we can change anything, no matter what the lawyers say. And the lawyers have to change their meaning, that they can change it to whatever they want. So, the reason we just agreed with the lawful part, first of all, you said we had issues with sanctuary, but yet last week, the two weeks when we voted on the sanctuary part, what did we have to say? Sanctuary, first of all, let's clear it up, that's the confusion. There is no confusion. Go look up the definition of sanctuary, and I have it right here, it's real simple. And I'm just going to take the first word it says, place of refuge or safety. That's all. It doesn't mean anything. It's not a law, it's not anything. It's just saying it's a safe area for you to go to. So, as the sheriff woke up, told you this feeling about it, this is going on right now in Virginia. In Virginia, they're talking about confiscating your guns up until January 21st in your magazines, if you have too many bullets in your magazine. They're trying to control what you want our to do. They are taking our rights away. And if you start out with a little word, and a next word, and the next word makes you know they're all around you. We're not allowing that. We're saying that we're going to protect our people, to anybody around me, if you're going to change that in Michigan, when constitutional rights in the whole country says this. And if you think I'm out of place, how many of you listened to the State of Union last week? The President said he's going to get his word and protect the cross, so you could carry your gun to every state. Because they're trying to take away our parts. So, it's invalid. Sanctuary is a part. It's telling whoever's over there, don't even think about changing it, because we're not going to allow it to happen. That's all it's saying. It's like standing up. Now, I look at the leaders, whether you're township supervisor, a mayor, a commissioner, you're a senator, you're a state rep, don't give me the words that I put a bill in. Bill Zicker, you all heard that story, not just the bill, it's sitting there here at Capitol Hill. What the hell does that mean? Stand up and say, no, I won't allow it to go on. That's what I'm looking for, leaders that'll speak up. And sanctuary is just to say, hey, so, don't get word, don't get stoned up on invalid word. It's not going to cheat the ground. It's just saying, we as leaders are going to stand up and protect our citizens. Clear?
I can't resist saying back to Commissioner Warren, if it's just words, then what's the problem with eliminating sanctuary?
No, we did talk sanctuary. We're talking about lawful.
We're defining it.
But defining lawful for the state of Michigan, and then the governor, and the three branches of party change, that he's got to go and be lawful, he's got to take our guns away. He's saying he's not going to do it, because it's not our constitutional rights.
And we're going to fight that, but we have a political process.
In the meantime, no, we're telling them, don't even go there, because in the meantime, yeah, we can fight it, we go to the Supreme Court, as Ian says. Right now, we're sitting here with what's going on in courts, look at what's happened to the President of the United States. Seven years, and we don't have anybody indicted. Nobody who's doing the wrongest thing is going to jail yet. That's in our country, and we're allowed it, because we're not speaking up. That's what I'm trying to say. Well, and tonight, I certainly...
And I appreciate...
I think it's my turn.
My voice is good.
And I don't know about anybody in this audience, but when I got out of the Marine Corps in 1969, I could walk down the street with my gun. I could go out and shoot any place I wanted to in this county. I could hunt any place I wanted to in this county. I could go to any other county in this state and hunt. Nobody said a word about it. Or I could go shoot where I wanted to, and you want to look at something? Look at the state constitution. And the Second Amendment, look at how many times this Second Amendment and the inability of own guns have been attacked and had to go to federal Supreme Court, the state Supreme Court, the same thing, and the same thing in Washington, D.C. You can just follow it all the way down, and follow it all the way down till you get to Billy Clinton. Then you can watch him take away a good share of your guns then, or try to. The only thing he did, he did us a favor, because he raised the cost of our guns, so if you had a lot of guns, you had a lot more money now. And that's what he did. And his idea of protecting you was to take a bayonet lug off the end of a rifle barrel. I mean, are you serious? But I mean, it's constant, all these little things, they picket you, and picket you, and picket you, and picket you. But pretty soon, you've got nothing left. This is not new. This is not new, the federal government coming after our guns. This is not new in this particular state. I mean, this is ridiculous, what goes on in this country anymore. You lose rights every day, it doesn't matter if it's Second Amendment or not. They're taking your ability to do anything away, and they're going to continue to do it as long as it's just words. Well, those words need to go, and they need to go to this governor, and tell this governor, and this new Attorney General we got, she's taking the day after tomorrow. So, the situation we're in right now, and I don't know how we got here today, because one of our commissioners left for some reason. So, we're in a situation, now if we do vote, I'm going to tell you what's going to happen. It's going to be a 3-3 tie. And guess what happens when you tie? It fails. I hope this wasn't planned.
That's what I want.
We're going to find out why this commissioner...
He was here this morning. I want to know why he's not here.
Why he left.
And I want to be asking a point blank in front of everybody, where were you last week? That's what I'm going to do next week. Because it's wrong, because these people all were counting on him. He's the one that put the wording in there. He's the one that said he was going to change it, and he's not even here.
First off.
That's what I'm upset about. That's what I'm upset about.
I would hate to jump to any conclusion.
I'm not jumping to any conclusions.
That Mr. Miller's absence is not, not 100%.
Well, I hope it's not.
And, well, I, I.
Because this was the first time we were going to have a full board here yet.
The other thing is, I, I, I wouldn't count your votes before they're hatched, so I will say that.
Okay. Are you ready to vote?
Well, considering that.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
The difference is, is that, or the, the one thing that I would like to say is that nobody disagrees with anything that you said or anything that you said. That's not, that's not the case. The disagreement is really over the verbiage. Now with me, it's going to come down to, I'll tell you right now, it's going, and, and that's why I called on the sheriff, and quite frankly, I, I think I had a, a really good understanding of what he was going to say. I knew that before going in. But I appreciate your comments, and I think it does come down to, is this, is this resolution intended to send a message and be symbolic, or is this resolution intended to create a specific action? That's what it comes down to. I do agree that there is, with our current governor, a, at least the, the looming threat is out there. And with me, I think I am satisfied that the intent of the resolution is to, is to send a message and to be the strongest way that we can currently send a message to Lansing when we support our Second Amendment rights.
Now, we have a motion in support, right? So we'll, we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
No.
Commissioner Hand?
No.
Chairman Warren?
Yes.
Again, and I, and I.
I understand why you changed, I understand why you changed.
I think it's a poorly worded resolution. I, I, it's not about Second Amendment rights. I know it's not, but my other two fellow commissioners say it. But at the same time, I do believe that it is meant to send a message specifically to our current governor to say that we support Second Amendment rights. I find that this, even though it's poorly worded, is the best way to do that at the present time.
That's all it was, symbolic and just send a message and go. I know what you want, you know what you want.
Same thing. I wanted to say first, I'm hurt to think that anybody on the board would think that we planned for somebody not to be here to vote. That hurts me personally.
I would hope not.
We don't know that.
It's more than hope. I can tell you conclusively, we didn't. But even to think it is, is hurtful. Secondly, I do have a statement that I, I would like to give to the clerk to enter into the record about my views. They've already been expressed, I can read it if people want, but it's, it's already just an expression of what I already said, so.
Do you want your, what you said read in the record?
I got something written.
All right.
I want to give to her.
Do we move it?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to enter in the record into that my no vote has only to do with my objection to sanctuary and the undefined. I find that conflicting with the constitution.
Okay. Do the clerk read, you know, read these into the record, and we'll put them into the record. Let's put this there. Moving on, we have no additional items. We're going to wait until the 5th to get some march to do the appointments, so that brings us down to draft motions.
Mr. Chairman, I would move motions 1 through 6 on page 1.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple quick questions on.
Hold on a minute.
Can we separate that with number 3?
Number 3, I'll pull number 3 for the discussion. So I'll move motions 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6 on page 1, clarify the motion.
All favor of the motion.
Support, or I?
I.
Go ahead.
And I will move motions 3, motion 3, on page 1.
Discussion. Just for Jeff, if we could ask, I was really glad to hear that, that there is sanctuary ability to adjust that rate. As I've talked to people who've been some of my townships, we got into the topic of other villages, and you're probably aware, for example, that we've got a lot of villages coming up, or being talked about coming up to be discussed. So the fact that it can be adjusted depending on your need, I think helps, helps you in selling that. Just to mention villages that I've heard, other people may want to correct me, but GLTA will be coming up, right, this August. EMS will be coming up this August, right, we assume. I've heard discussion about seniors villages needing to increase slightly, and I should say GLTA is not an increase, they want me to know that. There's been discussion that I've heard about the road village being proposed seriously. Veterans I know have talked about the need to increase that village slightly, and it's a small village. So there are a lot of requests, and the concern, of course, is out there that even though local villages are very important, and I should note that 9/11 is not a village of surcharge, but it's still a tax. So there is that concern that we may sink some of what we're doing locally, and local villages are really important. Unfortunately, what the state and federal government does with some of our dollars is not. But trying to change that, trying to get, get some of those dollars back in the pockets of people so we can do things locally, either individually or through government, is, is really a brilliant effort than under the, under the activities of parties now at this point, because both parties, I think, at the state and national level, have a real problem with not spending our money. So to be able to adjust things and be cognizant of the fact that we've got a lot of other villages, that is, I think, important. I did want to ask, with the, the 74%, that's, that's potentially up to about almost 50% increase from the 155 we're at now for surcharge. What percentage of the income for 911 is from the surcharge?
100%.
100%. Okay, and so we're projecting that there would be a need for a substantial amount of additional money?
No, not substantial, just 74%.
Or adjusted as necessary. All right, I'm going to support that, but it's going to be a challenge, I think, for a lot of our villages, I'm afraid.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like the, all the departments, everybody needs money.
Yeah, I forgot to mention.
Never heard anybody come in here and ask us to reduce.
I forgot to mention that we ourselves, for our general fund, are shedding money. Our expenses exceed our income, and we've talked about needing more money or cutting services drastically to make up for a million dollars that we're shedding every year. So one more unit to keep local government fighting.
Bring up the solution.
I wish.
Wish we all could.
Yeah, because it is.
Chairman Warren?
Yes.
Did I add to what Commissioner Hennig spoke of? All these individual villages, the seniors as we spoke, we're not, as you know, we're not preventing you from getting that stuff, there just isn't enough money around.
And I understand that.
But you, when you spoke, it sounded like we, you know, and I know you know that because you're now on the seniors' court, but there isn't enough money to go around. Veterans, we're having more and more veterans that need services. The 911, what you say, is a surcharge, but we need that. Because our tax base is at, almost to the very bottom, John, are we 79 or 80 right now, you know?
Five from the bottom.
Even, that's even with all of the extra voted villages, our base village, and then all the extra voted, we're still that low in the state. Which is good for the taxpayers, but bad if you want services.
Right, well, I think that's what the, the public needs to realize, that how low we are, and I know many of you moved in because of that, but why we have these extra villages, because our tax base is so low. So either that has to come up and be able to spread the money around to where it's needed, or we got to have the extra villages, many of them.
Well, they have to break through here.
Welcome.
I'm supportive of those. I'm from Mcgill County, it's higher tax basis than I've been here since 2004, and like I said, we're one of the lowest tax bases in this county. I love my property tax, I got other properties that pay a lot more for it. But with that realization, things, when people want them, they got to understand that we're going to have to probably ask for villages. People don't care about paying village taxes for things that are going to be helpful to them. What they don't want is when they have to pay village taxes, they're going to go someplace else. And that's what's caused all this problem in our country, we got to stop doing that. It's going to go for this, it's going to be done for that. It's going to be for teachers, it's for teachers, it's for them and for them. So, and that's where we got to start clarifying, this is going to go for this region, and you get a yes or no vote from your popular community. And I think you have a problem if you sell it that way. You do understand, yeah, that maybe some groups, that everybody needs to be a little bit higher.
Well, I think our villages, they, they are specific to what they can use.
Or use. But I mean, that's their fear, that's what we got to say, this is definitely going to be for your community.
Education.
The seniors are supported, as you know, by village. They're just supported by the P. Lapeer County. And that's one village that faithfully passed that village for the seniors. The problem is, senior population, as you're looking at one here, continues to go up in this particular county. Well, we have more and more seniors, let's face it.
You're the largest voting block in this county.
Absolutely, the largest voting block in this county. And the only way that money's increased, we, we do a pretty, we do a pretty good job with seniors, as far as the mills on wheels, everything else. This is one county that actually has a senior village and actually has senior centers supported by the county. You'll go into other counties, you'll find out that the senior centers are supported by the cities. What you got to do is look around, where they're supported by. I mean, so the county, in this particular case, I think does a pretty good job in trying to support the seniors. We don't get too much help from the cities. They like our services, but they don't sometimes like to participate, but the cost of things. But that's just my observation. So let's say that.
And I respect your observation. My observation is that I'm down in the trenches, and I say it.
We're in public time.
So.
Kind of in commissioner time, yes.
We still have a motion.
You got two more, two more to go. One, this one up, we got to finish up first. Somebody make the motion on number 3?
We already have.
Motion taken.
Favor, we're saying, we're saying I have it. We got a couple other things to do, we put the six up.
What do you got to get prison off of?
All right. So.
Make the motion move number 1 for the Health Department, Department of Civil and Health Administration, or Ministry of Health and Administration position, and if the Environmental Health Senior Program Specialist remain vacant and wanted to run the company, we will be doing it.
So, I see. All in favor of saying I have it?
The comment is, again, budgetarily, we're doing this because our pay for physicians, our technical physicians, is so low compared to other counties that we can't hire what we need at a higher, at a higher category. So, again, budget is really tough.
We post those jobs, but to get nurses at the Health Department, or to get sanitarians, we can't fill the sanitaryian position. Sanitarians are guys that come around and patrols of the ground, secretary of septic tank and stuff like that, that's what we call a sanitarian. But there are at, there's a demand for sanitarians, especially if you look at this time of year when everybody's trying to build houses, build pole barns, build anything. So we have trouble filling these positions with what we pay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the county's auto motion, the road commissions auto motion with the Controller's signature.
Support. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Hand?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarvis?
Yes.
Chairman Warren?
Yes.
We spent $2,207,393.38 in parter and taxpayer dollars this morning. Yes, we can move on. That'll bring us down to the second public time. Would anybody like to address this board during the second public time?
Can I address the board? I spoke once, and just, I've got several things I'd like to discuss, give you a few moments. First thing is the 28 issue. And I look at the sheriff in the back, and he, or his assistant, but we look at the weapon as a symbol, all right? Now, I come from the legal field, I look at the First Amendment, I look at the Fourth Amendment, I look at the Fifth Amendment, I look at the Constitution. So the symbol is important for constitutional access. Last certain seizure, we got the President of the United States being illegally eavesdropped upon. It was offensive. Watching what I saw in the impeachment place disgusted me. I wrote an article on it, publicly, I think I sent it to several of you. So I understand Mr. Warren's adamant passion over this issue, and I'm glad he did that. So I just point out your information, clarify your position, you're invited to the Tea Party on February 8th, everybody can express their viewpoints, discuss it, we're going to have the sheriff and the prosecutor give, give us the legal ramifications. Now, that brings us to that issue, let's go to the next issue. I sat with Commissioners Warren and Jarvis at Senior Coalition, and I listened to the village proposals, and we discussed it. I attended yesterday a school board meeting, they appointed the sixth physician or seventh physician for that board, just so you know. But what was interesting is everything that I had expressed in my written documentation has transpired. The first issue, Mayfield Township is now available, Mayfield Elementary is going to be available. So I discussed that with you, the issues. I think that you guys, Commissioners, please, form a citizens committee to see what could be beneficial to maybe senior programming or multiple programming per county with that elementary school. Because what can you do in the zoning area in Mayfield Township? And I'm bringing this information to my dear friends, our supervisor, and our clerk. Mayfield Elementary is going to be available. So, I discussed that with you, the issues. I think that you guys, Commissioner, please, form a citizens committee to see what could be beneficial to maybe senior programming or multiple programming per county with that elementary school. Because what can you do in the zoning area in Mayfield Township? And I'm bringing this information to my dear friends, our supervisor, and our clerk. So, that building, that elementary school, because it's unsafe and secure, they have come to a consensus that that building is going to be explosive. The other thing that is clear is that the white building is going to be somehow figured out to be, after ten years, demolished. So, that's on their proposal and their agenda. And I, I'm bringing this to your attention because I think there's opportunities here. And the opportunity is private-public sector cooperation. And that's where Mr. Henning comes in, because the collaboration group, 30, 35 entities of government, we need to get it filed, we need to reach out to the private sector and see what could be done. Now, in the background here, there's a gentleman who I talked to at length, and has proposed to the county grant writing. There is availability of grant money to do something with matching funds. Now, let's say you do a senior militia proposal, and you get a grant writer to match the funds, go to, and of course, we understand, we have a governor who's off the wall. But, I will tell you that, that brings us back to the Second Amendment and constitutional issue. The symbol that Mr. Warren is so adamant about expressing is really important in this state. Now, because we have a governor who is just off the wall with the budgeting and the financing and so forth. So, but grant writing is a possibility. And we had, the Senior Coalition and the Collaboration Group had a seminar on this just a week or so ago. So, you might want to explore hiring a grant writer, even though, you know, it's another budgetary thing, sanitation and so forth. But grant writing might benefit you guys, benefit the county as a whole. And I think, this lady here, I, we sat together.
Yes.
And she expressed, I'm bringing this to your attention because unfortunately, and I say this, or fortunately, I've grown into that group of senior citizens. I mean, we are the largest demographic block in, in, look, their county. Now, here's the problem, we talk about senior males, they're going to vote for the senior males. What happens if the school board comes back with another vote? What happens if this one comes up? Who is mostly burdened with militias in the county? Your largest voting group is your seniors. So, when you talk about, well, can we impress upon, can we afford to continue to survive with militias? There's got to be an alternative way of funding. And I think there was an article in the Harvard Press about 10 days ago saying we have to do something about the way we refinance schools and finance everything. We have to think about alternative methods of reaching out to the public to create some kind of avenue and resource to benefit everybody as a whole. So, I'm, I'm committing, a citizens committee to explore that might be a good idea. But I'm giving you the information that Mayfield Elementary is going to be available. It might be a service that you do. The annex that you talked about for the seniors, that's not the greatest facility in the world. And I will tell you that the programs that they're doing now are expanding beyond its scope. That's scope. I will tell you that the LaPierre Community Center for all those seniors, understand that the new health plans that they have when you become a senior, you can become a member of these health clubs or these community centers by virtue of having your health plan. The advantage plan, most of the advantage plans allow you just to go into the community center, show them your card, you can enroll in that community center, and you can advance your active recreation activities at that site. So, cooperative ventures need to be explored. Thank you very much for your time.
Let me, one second. I would like to thank Rick Warren very much for making that word out of the revolution because he pushed my button. And you saw what happened when my button gets pushed. I think everybody should attend these meetings. I have developed no appreciation for each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address this board during the second public time?
Billy Vax spoke earlier. Again, thank you folks for taking the time out. But, I just wanted just one particular thing to talk about. I, like Ms. Jarvis, word sanctuary, the bastardization is taking place in that particular word. That doesn't even face, when I say sanct, when I think sanctuary, it happens Sunday morning. Where do we sit? Where do we have our special ones? For a great many people. So, sanctuary, you know, that's, I just, I have a totally different perspective. I appreciate the struggle that everybody did. But, I would hope that, the one thing is that if a particular meeting is challenged, I personally don't think we should sit and take it. I think we should, you know, teach what it is, teach the meaning of it, and, you know, get proper information out. But the whole thing of the sanctuary, something so special, so many people in this nation, that's kind of troubling itself. But again, I thank you for everything you did.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address this board during the second public time?
I'd just like to thank the people that voted for the resolution. And I would like to make one comment about your, the problem with symbolism, and it not being, and the word sanctuary not being in the Constitution, so you won't vote for it. The flag is not in the Constitution. It's the biggest symbol that we have in this country. I'm sure you're not against the flag, but it's not in the Constitution, so you wouldn't vote for it if it said "flag" in the resolution? But, that argument makes no sense to me. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address this board this morning? Second public time.
Just real quick, I want to thank the members of the board for passing this updated resolution with the original wording as intended.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else like to address this board this morning during the second public time? Here in the seat, I want to close the second public time. That brings us down to Commissioner Reports. And, first thing I'd like to say, and I don't usually say too much about things, but I will talk to Commissioner Miller. And if I owe Commissioner Miller an apology, I'll give Commissioner Miller an apology, both of you at the same time, and I'll do it next week. If I was kind of you personally, sorry, it didn't mean to do that. Saying that, how do you have anything for, say, to meet the law or anything?
Couple of quick things. So, one, I'd like to thank everybody who came and expressed their opinion and their feelings about a very important issue. So, unfortunately, there are a lot of people who don't take the time to make the effort to do that. So, you were certainly heard a lot more than people who didn't show up. Secondly, wanted to make sure the board was aware that our library director is retiring in June. Our district library director is retiring, and they're in the process of hiring a new director. So, if you know of anybody who'd like to apply, I think the job description may be available for beginning process for hiring. Next, seventh is Monday. Hopefully, some people will join us up there for the board.
How do we ever agree to do that on a holiday? Where did that come from?
Probably because there's so many meetings on other days.
You have two meetings that day.
Yeah, well, I already had meetings, but I just wondered how the counties agreed to do that. It was just a standard day, and it's harder to change it than it was. You got a ride up there? Anything else, Al?
Yep.
Thank you. Bye.
We had enough standard day. I would just encourage everybody to always question your leaders and get them to commit to you, and don't give a circle. Other than that, it will be okay.
I've got a couple of things. The Quilt of Tears is coming to Santa Lat County on April 16th. And then it's coming to Pier County, and will be shown from April 3rd through the 27th. I have some flyers here. The esteemed team is bringing it to Santa Lat County. They're having an escort bring it in. And I've got the information if anybody has a motorcycle and wants to bring it, ride in with it, or a vehicle, it's not just motorcycle. So, I have that flyer. And I also have the times that they're going to be open to see it. It's going to be in from the school. More importantly, I don't know if everybody knows what the Quilt of Tears is. It's remembering that who died of Agent Orange, or are suffering from Agent Orange. There were, I think, 33 quilts last time they were here, and I believe they're up to 40. We're trying to see if we can get enough people around in LaPierre, Santa Lat, and the esteemed team, you know, we're the third community of Tuscola, to make a quilt just from our area. But I have the instructions on, they're all, have to be the same size, and they're sewn together by the people that bring Henry and Sheila, that take it all over the United States, the quilts. But, they have pictures on them, they have letters on them, they have medals on them. Whatever you want, you design it yourself, and they'll put it on, as long as it's the correct size. Over in Santa Lat County, the esteemed team has some ladies that will help design and sew for you. And I have the Bonnie number, it's there on the paper, that you can call and get more information on that and how to get it there. They're going to do a ceremony on the 6th, on, no, on the Saturday, at the dinner. And I'm not sure now.
About what?
Sorry, about when they're going to do the ceremony of presenting the squares that they have from people around, mostly widows are going to be there. And they're going to tell a story if they want, but the, well, blocks are going to be given to caretakers of the quilt. So, I have the information if anybody's interested. I don't have the time set yet for LaPierre's, when they're going to be open, but the dates we have. If you haven't gone and seen the, you really need to go, it's very moving. In LaPierre, we have vendors that, well, not vendors, but people will show different information. Commissioner Henning was there last time we brought it in. Museum up from, right, maybe, and then the individuals, some of them have, Wayne Jacobs has pictures of people from LaPierre County that were over there. But, that's enough of that. The other thing is, I went to the Friends of the Historical Courthouse, along with Commissioner Henning. And where, they have an art competition. And it's going to be, we have one that was, one of the first five.
That played, yeah.
Yeah. And, and they're going to be presented with certificates. And that's going to be on February...
22nd.
22nd, yeah.
Saturday.
Right, from 1 to 3. And then they are going to have a theater, a group come in again, and do a play at the Historical Courthouse, which is really, really deep-like. And...
I asked the same thing.
That's going to be in March 20th, 21st, and then the 27th, I believe. It's going to be for five times that helps the initiative there. If anybody is interested in Abadie, the murder, I believe. And tickets are $25. Fifteen of that goes to the Historical Courthouse restoration. And the players get, and, um... Veterans will be going for a militia. Getting their finances all straight throughout the year. And I think, that's all.
They're going to be going for a militia also?
The veteran?
Oh, no, the veteran.
Oh. I'm sorry, no, no. Pop one more in there, that's all.
Yeah?
Um, you know, I, I think I've sat, well, I've sat up here longer at this diocese than any other commissioner here. And over those years, I have seen a number of times when there was a large group of constituents that were very concerned about an issue. That have come in, and rightfully should, and I think that's a good thing. We always say, everybody up here, always says that we wish we had more participation in our meetings all the time. But in saying that, I've also seen a number of times when those constituent groups come in. And, and they say, well, if I got, if you don't agree with me 100%, then you're against me, and we're going after you in the next election. I would submit to everyone here that I in no way, shape, or form question my colleagues, Commissioner Schneider or Commissioner Henning's support for the Second Amendment. And I think that, quite frankly, anyone who does is ill-informed and needs to call and have a conversation with them. Because I think it's, I just don't think that's an accurate picture. In saying that, the other thing I would like to say is that in the last couple of weeks, I think it's last couple of weeks, Mr. Gavett, his daughter did one of probably the most unselfish and heroic things that I have seen in a long time. And at least from this commissioner, I think, at least, express that to her, and thank her, I'm sure, on behalf of everyone. And I can't go into it any more than that, and I'm not going to. And if you are not sure what I'm talking about, then speak with Mr. Gavett.
So, yeah. Anything else to go to the board?
I have a point in support of the end, I agree. Everybody's got different opinions on how they looked at it. Doesn't mean they were wrong. We had a strong opinion, how we felt, we kind of, you know, but there was a reason I felt the stronger than it is. But yes, these guys are great guys, they were maybe 90 years, they were really good guys.
You have to also understand, after a meeting's gone, we'll under-practice it. You have to also understand after a meeting, God will underpractise you.
Are we invited?
Commissioner Miller probably would have talked about Walk for War to raise money for our people needing, needing assistance during the winter. It's Saturday, February 22nd as well. I'm sure they still need walkers and people who'd like to contribute.
Can I speak to you after the baby and also to the gentleman that was there? Yeah, I can have a tour. If you have time, don't go down. Thank you.
Anything else? You go to adjourn.